Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two sets of minutes to approve from August 1st.
Yep.
And September 6th.
Yep.
Yep, we were.
I make a motion to approve the August 1st, 2022 meeting minutes approved and the September 6th, 2022.
And I would second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have payroll in the amount of $185,441.31. Seems kind of unusual.
Yeah.
Yes, probably about average.
Yep.
I did attach them separately. I put this in here so you can see what all the
Yes, okay, yes.
are making for paycheck.
Okay.
And it's been running around $185,441.31.
I make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $185,441.31.
And I was thinking that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we have to acknowledge the received payroll claims accounts payable report. Those are little at this time. $76,905.83. I'd make the motion that we acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. All right, that's new business, but before we get to that, I promise the lady that she can get up early so she can get out of here. Really, I just want her in and out as fast as she can, so so she can go away. So Cindy, if you would, please, come on up and we'll
Stephanie.
Ah, Stephanie. Stephanie is that
Sorry.
I was thinking Cindy. She wasn't there a while ago. I'm gonna give her some candy. Stephanie, as you recall, is the we appointed her to the health board. Now she's president of the health board.
Yes.
And she and I have had multiple discussions about getting that board oh, just lined out. I don't mean that, you know, as far as behavior thing. I just mean we have to get the correct people in the places. We have to make sure that we're meeting the state statutes as far as Republicans versus Democrats and similar majority. Appointing those positions that are required if available, if there is a an agreeable and acceptable person to appoint to those positions. If not, we can leave them vacant or we can we can appoint them otherwise with that stipulation of why that is. So it's been good discussions. I'm really excited to see to me, the health board really came alive during the COVID things. We had an opportunity to set up the testing facility and then inoculations facility, vaccination facilities with grants from the state, and we took advantage of those and set those up tonight. We have been commented by several surrounding counties of how well those things are operated and run. So it's nice to see action there, and I think we're in really good hands. I think we're really in good hands now as well. So what you got today, ma'am?
All right. So as you know, from my last report to the commissioners, we had some vacancy issues with our with our health board. And so going back and consulting the Indiana code that is attached to this slate of nominations and our current board roster, it is my pleasure to look at the Park County Board vacancies and the nomination slate to make sure that we have the political affiliation balance as well as the composition of the board in alignment with the IC code, Indiana code.
Let me explain that real quick in case somebody doesn't know about that. The state statute requires on most boards that we have no more than a simple majority between Republicans and Democrats. So you you really can't have more than one more than the other side, whichever side you want to go with, but can't have more than one. And that's been a struggle in the past, I find, because we're really a strong Republican county, of course, and it's been difficult to find people to match those seats. In fact, we really weren't sure, because for most of us, it doesn't matter. They're all friends of ours. It doesn't matter if they're Republican or Democrat. I really couldn't care less, but statutes do require that. They have changed some of those, CDC, for example. Some of those have been changed where that no longer has to be a consideration, but health board, one that remains, has to be a consideration.
Yes, of course. And so going back and looking at the Indiana code, it was stipulated that of the seven-member board that there shall be two licensed physicians, which typically hadn't been the case. And so we have put those physicians on the slate for consideration, one being a no-party but registered Democratic candidate from Florida township, but just did not vote in the primary, and the other one a registered Republican. And then when you look at item seven, we have then one vacancy for an at-large or general public requirement, and that is or, and per the the state code, we have submitted you with a list of five for consideration. It has been my pleasure to contact each one of these individuals that comprise item seven for the general public nomination for our board slate, and they have all been wonderful to speak with and would be willing to serve at the pleasure of the county should they be called to duty. So from the health board's perspective, this list is for your review, and if you have a preference, they have all, per my contact, agreed that they would serve should they be called.
Okay. Do we have a licensed physician on the board now?
We have a health officer, but that does not does not compose the health board and states in the state code that he shall serve as the secretary of the board, but not a board member.
Okay. All right. Well, let us think on these things then, and and maybe by next meeting, we should be ready to
Yep.
make some choices. That way Bruce could see those two before we go that way, so
Yep, and I'll leave you an extra copy for your records for him as well. But just contact me when you have the ability to collaborate. If there's any additional information that you would like about these candidates, please feel free to contact me, because like I said, I have had the pleasure to speak with all of them regarding their preferences of serving. And then the green, as you can see by the other, is no-party, which means that they did not vote in the 22 primary, which is eligible for this general public seat, and then the blue would indicate Democratic ticket poll.
Okay. All right. Good work. Thanks.
Just as an update, we have our vaccine room almost nearing completion. We have all of the inventory completed, all the products moved, and then we had our cabinet that was delivered this past week, and so we hope to be able to get that up and running. We are providing the COVID-bivalent vaccines. Those are available, and just
So everything that was in that room that you didn't want, that's all out now?
That's right. And I think Dawn's gonna work on the desk. So other than that, I think we'll be all set to go. So thank you for all your assistance on that.
No problem.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you.
See ya. All right. Under new business here, Chamber of Commerce day request. And that is a Chamber of Commerce wants to have a business day. And they want asking use of the courthouse and the lawn court, as well as the restrooms. And I've already made arrangements if we if we were to approve this, which I figured we would, but don't know that. I can't speak to that. But we have made arrangements. They understand the situation with the restrooms, that they have a key, and they will have to make sure that they're reasonably clean when they're done. I don't expect them to clean them, but not be trashed. And I will show them how to unlock the ADA accessible doors and turn those on on that day. So that's September 24th.
So is that your motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve a Chamber of Commerce to use courthouse lawn and restrooms on September 24th.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We also have, we got noticed before, but Kurt Landzone has a I'll say ascended to the position. I'm not sure if that's appropriate. Not we'll see how that works out, but he has got a different position now. He is going to be acting as the extension director. Now, is this a this a temporary thing? Is it interim thing? Or is it a full full appointment? You are it? How's the situation? What is it?
As long as I'm here, I'm happy to serve.
Well, great. Appreciate that. Okay.
So that the director, just to clear some confusion, that director position can be tied to any educator.
Okay.
A few years ago, kind of right at the start of COVID, Gail and Kurt were both trained as directors. Kind of piloting a model that may be a shared position or a rotating position. And with the vacant HHS 4H position, we just thought now would be a big time to have Kurt take over as director.
Will you keep the position you have now as well?
Yes.
So this is additional responsibilities?
Yes.
Okay. Additional pay to go along with those additional responsibilities?
They're exciting.
Okay, okay. Good thing. Typically, it's not how government works, you know. You used to have more jobs and no more pay, so
Oh, I know.
Okay. Been there, done that. I understand that well.
Oh, if your fire chief pays your own bill, you know.
Uh huh. I know. I think they refer to it as two lucrative jobs is how they refer to it in the statute, I think. You can't have two lucrative jobs. Anything you need from us? Any action you need from us? You don't need our approval. It's just you're letting us know that that's what the situation is, and so I think it's great. I'm glad to see it's filled and moving on. So far as I've seen, you got a good guy in that position. But we'll see how that goes from this point forward. We're watching. We kind of monitoring as we go. Still gonna be doing your blog stuff with fishing and maple syrup and all that kind of stuff?
Yep.
Good. If you ever need help with that stuff, holler at me.
We'll set fair dates if we can, July 15, 14.
Friday, July 14th is when it starts.
Okay.
Yeah, next year.
Okay. Mike, make sure we get that in minutes, and so if somebody asks. So Friday, July 14th will be the first day of fair coming up.
And our second secretary position has been posted.
Okay, great. Anything else you need from us? Thanks for coming. Thanks, Kurt. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Anything, holler.
Well, you can talk to your wife, get her under control, but other than that
Good luck.
Okay. See ya. All right. We have letters from Marathon Pipeline. We have several things mailed to us about pipeline safety resources that are available to us.
I think they're doing a maintenance
Walking survey, yeah.
Depth survey.
Yeah.
Just making everybody aware of it.
Says the survey will involve a two- or three-person crew walking the various segments of the pipeline, so I don't know if we need to put this in the paper to give people who are landowners that where the pipeline runs through, that you may see someone from Marathon Pipeline two or three at a time walking, doing depth surveys. So they won't get shot by the by the landowners there about they're doing? You want this letter? You have one? Okay, okay. Yeah. If you wouldn't mind sharing that in the paper, that'd be great. All right, small claims. John Fetter, where I'll be at that?
I just need somebody with the authority to sign the notice claim. So I don't know if you want Laura to sign that, or if you want to stop by and sign that, or
Why don't I do that? Take the pressure off Laura. I don't mind those things. That's really what we do anyway. She would be doing it our direction anyway, so you want to make a motion to authorize me to sign that on our behalf, and then I'll second that?
Yes, I make a motion to allow Jim to sign off at Nick's office on the small claims.
And I'm a second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will be tomorrow, I guess, maybe you do all right. Is ready, Laura?
Afternoon.
Okay. That'll work.
I haven't read it yet. It's on my desk.
Okay. And if I don't get there, remind me. Just send me a text.
Anywhere, anytime the rest of the week, basically.
All right. I do have some business. I know several things here. Let me pull these up real quick. Some of them are Randy's. I'll get with him when he comes up.
He didn't give you any candy?
Just so you know.
He didn't give you any candy?
Just so you know, I got a note from Don Puner that the fire, anunciator, installers, they're gonna be working at night, so if you get a notice or call from anybody about somebody being in the courthouse at night, that's what that is. He's notified the sheriff's department already. All right. We need to vote on an item for the sheriff's department. If you remember, we have authorized payments out of the ARC fund for the sheriff's public safety payments, a couple thousand bucks per year. And so as long as that fund is there, that we were asked to do that by the council. So I'd make the motion that we authorize the public safety payments to the sheriff's office. It's and it's about $74,000.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anything else, Laura, you need from us on that to authorize that payment?
No, we're just, is that the part that UNHOS is paying us? Or is this different? Does this sound like
It's different. Yeah, that, yeah, it's different stuff. Yeah, it's just just like a longevity or a bonus. It's actually a bonus coming out of ERP for first responders, and this time it's the sheriff's office.
And that starts when?
I can do it immediately, because Monday's from ARC. I would talk to either Roy or Chris, either one who could give you whatever information you might need on that. Okay. I got two road turf or Randy, and that's all I got. You got any old business or any new business?
Couple questions for
Okay. Then, well, let's start with sheriff. Sheriff, why don't you come on up?
I honestly don't have anything.
I like it.
Have something for me, so
Okay.
Might cuff her to the chair before you leave, so she don't cause any trouble.
You'd like to.
Yeah. I'm sure she's been there before. She is trouble. I understand. No gizzards yet, I'm guessing. And I hear your Mecca's not setting up with their their soup bowls. Is that correct? Is that Mecca did the soup bowls?
Hmm. That was near us?
Yes.
One of the churches.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I do remember that. You guys aren't setting up at all, though, right? Okay. I hate that, but I know you were doing, you were doing all the work. I know you were there every day, all day.
I really don't, but I do.
Flower lady. Yes, I know. I know. She'd walk down the, the tenet, there'd be a little cloud of cloud of flower around her as she's walking down the aisle there. All right. So Randy, I guess. Randy, you have two roads I'd like you to check on. I got calls from them. And one of them is 1150 north, remember where Mitch Simmons lived?
Uh huh.
Okay. He said he's got a tenant living there now.
Couple bad spots on it?
He said it's really, really bad shape. So if you would give that a look, I'll tell him you would.
Yeah, I got a double dog in back in the office.
Okay, good. And then the other, I was asked by Roger Allen today about grading 350 north, and I said, I'm sure you have it on schedule, but I mentioned it to you today that
He'll be there before too long.
Okay. I'll let him know. That's all I've got for you.
Okay. The contract paving should start next Monday.
Great.
They're supposed to do some prep work sometime this week.
720 we're talking about?
720, 1,000, yeah, 1,000 East and Ferndale Road.
Great, great.
And we went down last week and ground off from each bridge
Great.
150 feet or so, and so they can get tapered back in better.
I was mistaken when I spoke to Lee Creed before, because I told him that I was still of the impression that we were going all the way to 59, we're going 720, but we're not. He was talking to 720. It was pretty beaten up between the bridge and out to 59. Is it? Have you looked at that?
Not that bad, I don't think.
Okay. He just didn't know if he should patch it or not, because he takes care of that sometimes. And I said, I'd talk to you and see if what you thought.
About three holes out. But the last time I was on, I don't remember seeing any.
Okay, good. I'll let him know.
That was a week or so ago.
And I'll, and I'll tell him again, because I was wrong. I thought it was all the way 59, just going that bridge. What road is that that intersects with? At that bridge? The bridge that goes up the hill. There's a road off the right there, isn't there?
There.
Isn't it kind of a T into a road?
775.
That's 775. Okay. Okay. All right. What you got?
And we're gonna start our paving on pipeline and Chesapeake next week.
Okay.
Probably, we should be done with it in a week, I reckon. Unless we lose more traps. Bridge 84, we've got closed out on Tick Ridge Road.
Okay.
I've got a molder plate ordered for it, $46,726. Of course, we'll have to have some crane work, and I have to rent an estimator. That should be here two weeks from today.
And how much is it again? How about when the paving? Is it, has the pug mix problem been solved? Is it the same mix they had before, or they come back and make more pug mix?
No, I told you not to come back.
Okay.
And asphalt materials make this.
Great, great. Okay.
Yeah, I told him a month or so ago.
That's what Janie said, that you weren't happy with. I understand it completely. And last time, I probably didn't give you a chance to really give your opinion, because I'm irritated by them too, and I know it's just because we've always allowed it. We get upset about it, and they those companies either buy us back, buy us off or something. And I was really wanting them to have to restore that and make us whole. That'd be my preference. But I didn't give you a chance to comment on that. How are you feeling about that? Do you
Well, I know they're gonna come back and say, well, we didn't know how much material we had there, but we didn't only buy Park County Agard has a pretty good idea, because they mixed the material for us. The dry material. And so they're gonna say on that, because we don't really know until we've hauled it out and get it laid, how much material we had.
How can they mix it then? How can they do business like that? How can they do that? They're just guessing how much you're putting in?
You go by a minute. You run a dry material through the puddle mill. Whatever runs in a minute, then you adjust your puddle mill to that to have how many gallons you want, like 13 and a half, is what we generally always use. And then you weigh it again with the oil in it after a minute, and you get the weight of the oil in, and you divide that out and get your gallons per ton.
Okay. It's just been tough the last couple of years, and it's just it's tough for the people that pay the bills, because they got these roads that just turn into junk, and it falls back on you. They want to blame you guys for that. It's no, it's not your fault. You're not making the mix.
It's not junk, really. I mean
Oh, I understand.
There's more oil in it, so it'll last longer.
Right. They won't state it's probably, yeah.
The thing is too, though, they're doing that that's their business, and they have formulas. You can measure a pile and know what's in it. Calculate tonnage real close, in a real close, so
I don't want to take too much of your time. The reason it bothers me is it's bothered me since I've been commissioner on other bids that we've had, and I'll just do this real quick. Let's say it's maple syrup. You're you're running the pancake breakfast, and you want 50 gallons of a light amber maple syrup. And so I contact you, and I've got some dark amber from left over, might be some dark amber syrup, but I'll sell it to you for 50 bucks a gallon. You don't want that. You want your spec, say, a light amber. So I say, fine, I'll put a bit in for for $60 a gallon for light amber, and you're good with that. So we make a deal. You're gonna buy this light amber syrup for me for 60 bucks a gallon. I don't have any light amber syrup. I've just got the dark, but I know that going in. And so we have this deal. Come time for your pancake breakfast, and I send in 55-gallon barrel of maple syrup. And it's the dark stuff. It's not the light stuff, but you don't have a choice. Just like you already put it down, you know you got a problem, you put it down. So you've got to use this maple syrup. And so I said, oh, my bad. I'll sell it to you for 50 bucks a gallon instead of 60 bucks a gallon, and you're okay with that, because you're getting some money back. But what order did for me as a businessman, I sold you all that dark syrup. I had 50 bucks a gallon, and I was trying to sell you in the first place. So it didn't, didn't hurt me at all. And I'm not saying that these guys, or anybody you've had to deal with, are crooks along with that. I don't mean even to insinuate that. It's just there's no punishment for them. There's a less quality product for us, which may cost them more, because they put too much oil in. I understand that. But it's not what you ordered. But they just offered to give you some money back, and we'll just call it even, and that didn't solve the problem for me. Okay. Like you said, you want me made whole. Like Dan said to you, you want to be made whole on these kind of things, and I just all right, fine, we'll accept it. I'm tired of, okay, fine, we're just accepting it.
We don't have the contract. Laura's against that, so
Would you rather we not pursue it, or we do pursue it?
It don't matter to me.
What do you think?
But I know they're gonna come up with a lot of excuses.
Yeah, they are.
Legitimate excuses.
And he's not gonna use them anymore anyway, so maybe we shouldn't bother you with that. What do you think?
I just need to see the contract before I can really have it.
We've already put all of it down. They make, correct?
Yeah.
So we've got it to deal with no matter what. So
Not changing anything.
I guess squeeze them for all you can get them for and be done with it. He's giving us the credit. I forget what that was. Thing I'll do is for not using more, the credit's not gonna do us any good. It's just my I was gonna call him.
Yeah.
But I've put that off now, to be honest. Jim told me not to accept any money. I guess as far as, in my opinion, I'm not just speaking for myself, you've dealt with them already directly. You probably have a better handle on what you think you can get out of, what you think you can do to make it He does the credit of like $17,000.
Well, let's do this with Nick's approval. You you, I told Randy when he gets the checks sent back from them, not to accept it, not to cash it, because that's that's us saying, okay, fine, it's an agreement. We'll do that.
But I thought Randy told us that was for something totally different.
It was.
It is. It's for, we had a load of oil that didn't have the right amount of anti-stripp in it, and well, I just turned up, turned the material down, because I didn't think it was gonna stay.
Yeah.
And so they readjusted the anti-stripp, got it where it's looking pretty good. And, but that load that we had made, we had to bring it back over to the pit and run it through on the paving material. This was patching material.
Okay.
So that's, because we were out of a load of patching material.
Yeah.
So that's what that's for.
And all the, all the Mecca for to do that.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So are you okay with that $17,000 credit for this?
Yeah, that pays us back for that load of oil and the rock that we mixed to start with.
Are you okay with us accepting that?
If that's, like I said, Randy has dealt with him. He probably knows him better than we do, whether we're gonna get anything out of him or not, so I don't
Well, in my mind, we just need to okay that as being a settlement, because that's what we need to do in ministry.
Yeah, that's different than what we were talking about in the other part, but yeah.
All right, I make a motion then that we authorize Aunt Randy to accept that settlement. What's the name of the company?
BitMap.
BitMap. Okay, with BitMap to settle the issue with the with the oil and the material.
Pug mix, and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And that was the only reason. I'm gonna make sure you understood when you didn't want to cash the check. That's the only reason. I knew legally, if we accepted that and cashed that, we we accepted the agreement. That was that we couldn't go back on it for anything if, once that happened.
Well, we can't cash a check anyhow, because of the oil.
Yeah, yeah, but they wouldn't know not to cash it if we didn't instruct you not to do that, hang on to it. Okay, what else you got?
Oh, we'll probably go down next week, register in Mansfield, mark the lines.
Great.
And I think that's all I have.
Just so everybody knows, you might put in the paper, the tents may be coming in a week early this year. It's a new company. And they want the shacks on the square by October 2nd. Now is my understanding for PCI. Is that correct? For 2nd, which is still two weeks before festival starts, but I understand why, because they're not sure what day they can get there. It's my understanding that the the big tent on the north side is gonna be the same as always. The pole tent, that the other's gonna be rail, and it's just a different type of construction. Still gonna have the side side curtain stuff on, so we'll see how all that works out. But it is a new company. Tent, Lafayette Tentining does not do that type of tent stuff anymore. Okay. All right. Nothing you need from us?
No, don't think so.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Still down employees, or?
Yeah. Down a truck now, is that what you
Yeah, I can down another one now. Another one? I know we discussed once before, and I don't know what else changed with this new CDL law. If you have trucks under CDL, can you have a full-time driver in them? Before, it used to be they only had to have a CDL physical. If, if you was working, if I hired someone and put them in a something under 26,000 GBUW, then they were still required, because it was doing it for money, to have a CDL physical, but they did not have to have a license. I didn't even know they had to do that. Yeah, they, legally, they do have to have CDL physi, even if you're mowing yards for somebody and pulling trailer mowers. I didn't know that. But I wondered if we ought to start looking into some of that. We talked about possibly getting a couple smaller trucks with dump beds that apply on them, so at least patch, and because I know it's getting harder and harder. We can't keep guys, we can't find guys to run trucks and I've got a mechanic hard. He's gonna start in two weeks.
Good.
As a matter of fact, he was there before, Nathan Olin. Gonna interview another non-CDL one in the morning.
Okay. I'm still amazed that you have people come for interview, if they show up for the interview, but then they just don't show up for the job after you hire, and just don't show up.
Two of them do that now. They have one that didn't show up in interviews.
Strange world. You mean it gotta be there every day?
Yeah.
7:00 in the morning? Nobody said that.
I think that's the idea, wasn't it? I've been wrong for 45 years or better.
Yeah, yeah. All righty, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. You check on those two votes for me. I appreciate it.
All right.
I will tell them that you're doing that.
Yeah. It might be off when we get there.
Okay, okay, I'll let them know.
Have a good evening, Randy.
You too.
Anybody else have anything for us? Nope. Okay. I guess that's all the business we got. I make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that.